Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
Beard.
Here.
Kidd.
Here.
Osby.
Here.
Bosbun.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Dressler's here too.
Oh, great, okay.
Our railroaders here?
Thank you. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Stood by the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of agenda motion?
I'll see you agree.
Well, second.
Okay, all those in favor? Maybe we'll go by roll call Dale because I can't hear everyone as well.
Okay, no problem. So, we have Commissioner Wright for the approval of agenda.
Oh, actually it was.
No, I've got the first beard, Osby was the second, we're doing the votes.
Oh, yeah, hi.
Yes.
Beard, Kidd.
Yes.
Bosbun.
Here.
Osby.
Yes.
I think, did we lose Dressler?
He's a blue screen.
I think he's on there, but can you hear us Charles?
It said that he left.
He's still logged in though.
So he, he, he got off his cellphone it appeared and now he's logged in.
Commissioner Dressler, are you there?
After the tone, please record your name and address.
Dressler.
Okay, do you approve of the, the agenda, Charles? It's just a yes or no?
This meeting is being recorded and or transcribed.
Well, it did pass, so I'm gonna move on. Conflict of interest, is there anyone that has a conflict of interest with any of the agenda items? It looks, Charles, it looks like you're muted.
Yeah, I just had to call back and get on it, so I'm here.
All right, very good. Do you have any conflict of interest with the items that are on the agenda?
No.
Okay, any correspondence?
None.
Okay, so we will, I'm not sure who's, if there are introductions in the present, Dale, if you could maybe help me out with that, otherwise I'll move on to the public appearance.
Yeah, former counselor Sean Goodmanson here.
Okay, thank you, welcome Sean. Public appearance, persons wishing to address the commissioners on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When addressing the commissioners, please come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section two dash eighteen. Amendments to California code, government code section five four nine five zero prohibit the commission from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. The first public hearing, notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of a conditional use permit, adding a twenty-eight thousand six hundred one square foot building for cannabis cultivation totaling thirty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-four square feet located at two-one-one Balboa Street, also known as APN zero six six zero dash zero eight one dash two seven dash zero 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 in the C-zone, C, I'm sorry, C-three zone. Staff report.
Yes, Honorable Chair and planning commissioners, in front of you, as stated, we have ten dash nineteen dash twenty twenty-two P.C. for cannabis cultivation, today's October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. As previously stated, we're looking for a conditional use permit, the applicant's looking for a conditional use permit, adding twenty-eight thousand square feet to an existing building, the total thirty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-four square feet located at two-eleven Balboa, as previously stated. So the location, the project is situated approximately a hundred and forty feet from the northeast of the Interstate forty, located on the east side of Balboa Place. We sneak in, that's our location now, let me just take you in a little bit more, there's, it's highway zoning, C-three, which allows this use, the project is directly east of existing cultivation buildings totaling thirteen thousand six hundred and forty-eight square feet, and it's currently in the process of being built. So as you recall, three fifteen Balboa here is currently in the process, it's entitled for cultivation, and then down right across the street, two fifty Balboa, that's also, so this is within an area that has currently cannabis activities for taking. Just, and here's just an aerial map, as you recall, this is a existing building, Great West Trucking, which was a repair shop, truck repair shop, and the existing thirty-nine, thirty-three square foot building at the site currently exists, and we'll get into that a little bit, but a little bit of background, so the cannabis cultivation facilities being proposed here to use the old building and the new building, and I'll show you what that site plan looks like, but on the existing one point five acres, both structures will be connected to be a single building, the site is within the highway commercial zoning, which permits, which permits this use, and the project will employ fifteen full-time employees and be open from six A.M. to six P.M. And then here's the existing site plan, as you can see from your screens, there's an existing three thousand nine hundred and ninety-three square foot building at the site that will be utilized, again, it's along Balboa Street. Here's the proposed site plan, taking a look at the new building being added to total the three thirty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-four square feet. As you can see here, there are, there's a building with enough parking, forty-one parking spaces to include two ADA and five bicycle stalls, for those that want to ride their bike to work, and so this is what we're looking at in terms of the proposed site plan, again, the existing building and then the, the build-out of the twenty-eight thousand square foot building right next to it, with all the parking and the frontage along Balboa. And then looking at the floor plan, you can see that they are proposing numerous flower rooms, fourteen to be exact, with a mother room for the immature plants, dry rooms, clone room, stock room, utility closet, generator closet, electrical room, fermentation room, security offices to be located at the site. Again, this is pretty common, these are the type of rooms that you're gonna find in the cannabis cultivation, a trim room as well, and then looking at the landscape plan that's been provided by the applicant, it is covering the building, but the most important piece is that, what you're looking at here on the west side of your computer screen, but you're looking at various types of a hundred and sixty-six new shrubs, six valley oak trees, two purple plum trees, seventy-three sunshine, lynx trumps, artificial sod, river rock and gravel, to include ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-six square feet of new landscaping at this project site. So that's what's currently being proposed, and again, the applicants here, you wanna talk more about this, but this is what we have in front of us today. Looking at the elevations, and you can see that the building will feature two roll-up doors, in front of you, there is the existing building in yellow, and then the build-out right behind it, but this is the front elevations looking at from the west. This is the elevations looking at from the north, and the two separate build-out and the existing building, and then here's from the east, and then here's from the south. And so, taking a look at what the building's gonna look like today, or what it does look like at its present time, this is what we're looking at, looking from the east, from the northeast, you can see that it's open area, lots of open buildable areas from the south, existing gate, dilapidated gate, and same little body in that presentation, okay? And so there've been some added conditions, and so the project has been conditioned to repair and replace cracked concrete pavement, ensuring lighting is shielded appropriately in certain areas from the residential uses below it, any exposed metal surfaces shall be masked with architectural enhancements, at all times the building shall be maintained appropriate paintings here, the proposed building is to be painted a gray tone for the building siding, and then here is what they're calling indoor nursery and what it's proposed to look like. So our recommended action is to approve resolution number ten dash nineteen twenty twenty-two P.C. to the city council for a C.U.P., adding twenty-eight thousand six hundred and one square foot building to, for cultivation facility, the total thirty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-four square feet at the project two-eleven Balboa Street, APN zero six six zero zero eight one twenty-seven zero 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 in the C-three zone. The applicant is here, that does conclude my presentation, but you have any questions for me, or the applicant, go ahead and start those at this time.
Okay, does, does the applicant have a presentation, or?
She's, she's on her way down right now.
Okay.
I believe this is.
One second.
There's a speed limit.
I know, sorry.
I had to wheel in for those of you that aren't present.
Yeah, just list your name and address, please Cheryl.
Cheryl Montanez, five-two-six-eight Dulce Palmus Road, Fielin, California.
Okay, so you're okay with the amendments that have been proposed?
Yes, we've worked with, yeah, the planning department to go through all the departments and get our condition, so we're happy with the conditions.
Okay, do you have anything to add to what Patrick presented to us?
I think he did a great job, I just wanted to be able to answer any questions, I mean, it's similar, you've seen our projects before, so I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, anyone have questions for Cheryl while she's up there?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead Ms. Beard.
First, can you bring your mic closer to your mouth?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Let me scoot my whole deal. You can hear me.
There we go. Um, okay, so in the paperwork that I got, first of all, there is no key to the landscaping on my landscape plan, and I didn't even get that rendering that's up on the screen right now, so I couldn't see what we're talking about with gray stripes. The conditions include gray, and they say the other color is gold. That looks yellow, and the renderings, I mean, the paperwork I have looks orange, so I don't know what color that is going to be, but I don't think it really matters.
It's probably not that bright in real life, I think, depending on what screen you're pulling it up on, because mine's a little less electric yellow or whatever you want, you know, hazard yellow.
Gold?
Um, just, I didn't do the rendering, so I didn't design, but just to give that initial front a little pop versus it just being desert tones, trying to get away from the desert tones.
Okay.
Everywhere.
Conditions are in paragraph fifty-five, and it shows with painting, shall be painted with gray tone, okay, and the, where else, where else we saw it, is indicated as alternating gray toned different, on depth of colored stripes as the rendering up there, okay? So as long as it's up there, I don't have a problem. If it's gonna be painted all one shade of gray like these conditions say, I don't have, I have a problem, because.
Should probably say gray two-tone, so I think it, it might need to say gray two-tone, maybe just add the word two-tone.
Stripes, I mean, why, why are you not wanting to call it stripes?
However you want to.
That's stripes, okay, two-tone can give you control of where the tones are going, okay, but will it match that?
Yes, this is part of the package, so it'll show this.
Pardon?
This is part of, this rendering is part of the package that would get approved, so this would be the rendering we are going with, that's what it's gonna look like, so it'll be a white and gray, that you guys are gonna approve and we're gonna go on, so when it's all done in a sealed deal, this rendering will be part of.
Okay, this rendering was supposed to be in our package, or it just didn't, okay, didn't make it, all right. So, that's, that's lovely, what I'm seeing on that rendering, it's not in here, okay? The landscaping has no key, this is what I got for landscaping, first of all, I can't read anything on it, second, there's no key, there's no color, there's no nothing showing anything, which is usually the kind of landscaping you provide, this is.
Yeah, there should have been a whole landscape plan, it looks like somebody grabbed the plan and stuck it on a.
This is not what was in here tonight.
Yeah, this.
Yes, that is not this.
I didn't make that.
So we know about me and landscaping, okay, and that's a beautiful area down there, and I mentioned to Mr. Martinez earlier in the last week or so, that the palm, maybe it was today, the palm trees on the other side of the road, the one across the street are growing up beautifully, you can see it from the freeway over by wagon wheel, and it's looking great with those palm trees, so the landscaping becomes very important because this sits a little bit higher up from a visual.
Right.
And it is gonna be important because you're gonna be able to see it from everywhere, so as long as this plan is your Cheryl.
Yes.
Typical landscaping plan that works for me.
And it'll be in the building and safety package that gets approved for the construction plans, so it'll be onsite as needing to be done, so when they go field inspect, they'll have that plan with all those bushes and everything called out, yes.
And city council will get the key, they'll get this drawing, right?
Yes.
Since it's not in our packet, I wanted to make sure city council got it, assuming we approve it. Okay, so, um, those are two issues, and paragraph fifty-six, I, I think you've used this term before, but I don't recall what the meaning is, any exposed metal surfaces to the building shall be masked with architectural treatment. I don't see any enhancements on here, what are you referring?
I think they're taught, I did it, those aren't my verbiage, I think that's just coming from planning, how they're putting the verbiage, so the ugly old building that's there is gonna be masked with new siding, is a basic translation of that, so what you see in this picture is nowhere near what's, well, take down the overhang and then reskin, basically, I would use the word reskin, the building with new metal, so it looks pretty.
And it, of course, will perfectly blend with the stripes, right?
Of course.
Okay. Um.
Well, that's the yellow part, the yellow part is the building.
What is the, what do you consider, you Cheryl, consider the enhancements on this building? Usually you have what you do on the one facing the hill.
Yeah, and then you guys went and approved Stizzy with the big fat stripe, so how can I force my clients to?
Not do anything they said.
I, well, I went by what was, you guys approved, so we initially, it was a bigger push of more architectural enhancement as far as pop-outs and things like that, but if, obviously, they're spending multi-million dollars on, you know, these buildings and all the trimmings on the inside, so that, it is a cost savings, and obviously doing color, it does look much better, I mean, we're making that front building bigger, and we're still spending a lot of money, but all of those pop-outs that Dean has, that he's back here listening to, like, why the heck did I have to do that? I'm sure as part of, at the beginning, we were much stronger on getting the extra, but it is an expense, it's probably, if I did that to this building, it would be a couple hundred thousand dollars.
I don't think it is necessarily appropriate for those buildings, okay? What other, what other enhancements in the past are you familiar with, or what, what might you suggest as an enhancement?
Well, I mean, any architectural enhancement is like the awning over the doors, just any kind of pop-out or color change, material change is your architect, that's just us as an architect making it pretty, and it has zero function.
Okay, and what are those white, they look like tanks?
Those are your CO2 tanks.
Can you, can they be covered with an awning?
Sure, or screened, a trellis?
Well, yeah.
I mean, they need to be accessible, but.
Care of an enhancement, and it, I mean, it would be inexpensive to put up some kind of, if you can do that, I don't know yet, you need legal.
They need access to the front because they fill right there, so I could, we could look at something like over them and over that door.
And maybe have it match the front building.
The yellow?
Well, whatever color you're really gonna paint it.
The goldish, yeah, whatever.
Orangeish, yellowish.
Uh, yeah, I mean, like, the front hat over the door has the little awning, those are required by code.
Oh, it does?
It does have an awning, so.
That's tiny.
I would probably match that, though, on a bigger scale over, if that's what we're looking for.
Because you wanna be able to see an enhancement from the freeway, okay, and, or the other side of the freeway. So, yeah, I mean, your enhancements on the Taco Bell buildings up against the hill, and you're doing Balboa across the street on this, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay, so you're doing those same facades on those buildings.
That one has some pop-outs.
Three of them on that?
That has a couple of pop-outs over the door.
So I'd ask for a copy of it, but I, I have it in a stack of paper somewhere, but I thought I remade.
Yeah, there was a pop-out that was similar too.
So, um, what you're saying is these people can't afford anything like that, right?
No, what we're saying is.
I'm, I'm asking, I'm talking to Cheryl, I am talking to Cheryl, though, I'll talk to you in a minute, if you don't mind, um, so are you saying it's just a matter of money on those overhangs?
Yeah, I mean, A, so for my answer to that is, A, everything extra costs money, right, so as a designer, we have to take that into consideration.
But you have to comply, do you not, with our code that requires a certain percentage of the total cost in enhancements?
You guys are allowing paint change color as those enhancements, so that's kind of the suit we followed, but can I let?
Yes, Ms. Beard, the one directly across.
And you identify who's speaking?
Sean Good, Sean Goodmanson, representing Lamont Wosley, I'm actually the one representing this, Cheryl's the sub. The one directly across the street has zero architectural pop-out, zero, directly across the street from this facility, not the ones down the street, the one that's operational now has zero, that's the reason why we went with this, also, Stizzy got approved without the pop-out, so at the beginning, we like consistency, but the city's the one that got away from consistency, so we're now back to what looks good for the area with one directly across the street, why are we gonna offer an expense of a couple hundred thousand dollars?
I would not want you to match what's being done across the street, I'm giving an example of what an enhancement is, in the hopes that we can come up with something else that might be considered an enhancement that wouldn't cost very much.
The color changes is considered your architectural enhancement, so when we change color, it is an architectural enhancement, it's not a plain white box, and we were pushing initially for, yes, all the pop-outs and things, and that's how we gave, we served that originally, but like you're saying, it's hard, because of course, this guy's standing across the street looking at the other building going, I don't have to do pop-outs, right, like, I don't need all this extra, so it's hard for me to push that on him, when you're right, it doesn't, so this is where we're at. I still have to work with my client, trying to save them some costs, and then, of course, we don't just say, here's the building you're gonna build.
Well, I'd like to see, because I would assume it's low cost comparatively speaking as an enhancement, at least maybe an awning over those tanks, I don't know how you would design it to keep the cost down, I really don't care what it's made out of, um, but maybe, I'm just suggesting if the color matches whatever color you paint that front building, it might act more as an enhancement, but it also might look really tacky, so.
Well, look at that, it could be just probably a black, I would just go with a black.
An awning that continues the same stripe pattern over the roof of it.
Then you won't see it, it'll blend, I think something just a black.
Well, I can see it if I'm up by wagon wheel.
No, I mean, because it's an aw, it's gonna be at your view, you won't see the stripes on the actual awning, so like some, a black, something that pops out.
I'm thinking of an awning that slanted down.
Oh, see, I'm doing a straight awning like on the door, yeah.
I'm thinking of one slanted down.
Because that's more of a, it'll be ugly so quickly.
Take your word for it, because it's a house type.
Yes, and so if you look at the newer buildings with, like, a lot of the new fast foods have the more current, up-to-date architectural enhancements, or do the metal, it's flat, kind of an open steel-framed, so we're not doing anything, it's just a look.
Black would look really.
Yeah, I think if we did that on the front and on that side right there, we can give that a little bit of.
And make the awning over the front door black.
Mm-hmm, yeah, those would match.
So they would tie in together, and there's an enhancement there going on, like somebody thought, thought about.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm not ready yet, I may, I have a checklist.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Just real quick, so CO2 tanks on the front of the building to be screened from the freeway drivers with black awnings to be installed?
I don't think it, don't put screen, because screen would be hiding them, I can't screen them because I gotta access them.
Well, she's gonna be.
It's just an enhanced awning.
She is going to need to access, access to all the time, so she can come up with something that maybe hides them somewhat, but also functional, but I'm not sure that, we can determine that for her either, we, I think, leave it open so that she can come up with something that somewhat hides it and then is still accessible.
Okay, CO2 tanks on the front of the building to add architectural enhancement.
Awning.
Well, that is too vague, awning.
I would just say add an awning over CO2 tanks inside door.
And it doesn't have any purpose in screening, it's just an enhancement.
Correct.
And also, if you're gonna have a black fence, it'll match the.
Right, it'll pull from the rod iron to that in that front, mm-hmm, it'll look good.
I don't have any more questions.
Okay, thank you Cheryl, Sean.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't know if anybody else on, on the commission.
Okay, any other questions, for those that are not present, have any questions for Cheryl, or the?
I, I do have, Madam Chair, I do have one question.
Go ahead.
So I under, I understand the black awning, and you're gonna also then do the, where the yellow awning is above the door on the yellow building, that's gonna be black also. Now, this awning, is it gonna come directly and be supported from the interior, so it's gonna come straight out, or where there, are there gonna be posts coming down, or I just?
On the front door?
No, on the one in front of the.
No, it'll, hey, we'll design the building to support it.
Okay.
So we'll pre-plan for that, so it's just gonna be like Taco Bell, KFC, all of them use that, and that's why I know it's readily accessible, something that we can easily do.
It'll be held up here, so the tank will still be in full view.
Just like that, you'll just see a thick, probably six-inch steel.
I have one more question, and I don't know if it's even possible, because I love the contrast with the multicolored gray and with the, you know, in our packet, it's more gold, this is more yellow, I like both.
It won't be gross, I promise.
Are the, is, would it be possible, just because you're looking at, at the yellow and then, then multi-grays, would it be possible, instead of white, can those tanks be painted?
Typically, you don't own those tanks, you lease them from the company and they standardly come in white, so I would probably say no.
Because I was just wondering, then it would give it a real matching, but if, yeah, if they're leased, then forget it, never mind.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Will?
Madam Chair, I've, I've got a question. Being, this is a cannabis facility, I was just curious if there are any specific odor control measures, if that's something that might be an issue, I'm just curious what, what they're doing in the way of odor control for, for the facility?
Always in cannabis, there's an odor control plan that's submitted. The technology's coming a long way, I'm sure you guys have all been to the new lounge, they have a cool odor control system that, you know, we're introducing to client, obviously, it's there, you can see, so there's people alive smoking and that smell is staying contained in there, it doesn't even smell inside the building while people are doing it. So, yeah, technology's been advancing on that, so we have the fans and the, the air conditioners, yes, you have this dizzy issue with those open air type systems that we wouldn't install, these are your regular ten or twenty-ton dike and units, that's more enclosed, so we don't have fresh air exchanging outside, but I think, yeah, this new system is something like everybody's gonna be looking at.
Yeah.
And you're not doing it, you said?
It's not in my plans currently, we have my standard with, where we're sucking the air, cleaning it and blowing it way up in the air, and dealing with it that way, but I am introducing that system, if there is a problem, or, you know, there's solutions now, there are better solutions out there, just as technology is catching up with the problem that every city's having.
Well, when Stizzy was here, they talked about the building, the second building they were gonna build up on Lily Hill, and that it had, you know, an in-house system where nothing was blown out, or, and so I think.
It's a package unit, they were describing to you a package unit, and they were saying, like, it's still, so by code, I have to exchange air, so there's no way to not bring in outside air, and if I'm bringing in outside air, I'm increasing the pressure in the room, so I gotta let it out. So when you let it out, you let it out through charcoal filters and the light technology and all those things that are killing that, and then you're sending it up high enough into the sky that by the time it hits the ground, it's dissipated. If you don't have, so what, the ones that you're smelling usually have, they don't have that filter mechanism inside the ducts that are, they're exhausting, so adding those ducts is big, and I think even Dean and his facility has added, because then you got the hallway that isn't actually exchanging air, but that's where people are going in and out, and he put in a fan that sucks from his hallway and is, is throwing it out, and he's had, he had no more smell issues and things like that, so he's done a good job with that, so that's something that's easier to implement into these for hallway issues. So that's something that's easier to implement into these for hallway issues. And then I just recently visited the, the, um, lounge and we were looking at that. So we're looking into what those prices are, because depending on how many of those it takes to control, you know? But in the end of the day, I still gotta send air outside, so we're always still gonna have those charcoal filters.
Well, that's fine, and that's understandable. Just, uh, as long as, as long as, I can say, using the best right now and ten and three later if we need.
Right, and that's, yeah, that's where I'm seeing technology. So eventually we'll have some good can filters that go inline in your ducting for my exhaust that is, you're gonna be able to stand on top of it and not smell it. We're getting there.
Well, the reason that I bring this up, if I might, is I'm sure some of the others have noticed the same thing. I've actually driven, you know, on I-40 through town and I could actually smell it in my car driving by some of the facilities on the freeway. So I, I, it's my understanding your facility's gonna be fairly close to the freeway. So, you know, obviously, um, I know you're trying to do the best you can, but it, it's always a concern with these facilities, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think, to be honest with you guys, so that you know what you, when you're driving and you smell something like that, I can tell you it's probably a harvest day for a facility and they threw up the roll-up door and they're taking those buckets in and out and you're driving through that whiff and it's probably, you know, just those, that time of day. So unfortunately, we have to get the product out. And so when you roll up that big roll-up door, there's not as much as that, that's where you're gonna get those whiffs. That's why it's not a consistent, you're gonna, like, I think Stizzy was even explaining, cause they would throw up the doors and leave them open, because they were in and out and doing things. So it's more of an operational procedure and Bernie being out that, you know, having those doors shut, you know, open them, do what you need to do and get them closed. It's like driving by the bakery, you smell bread. So there's never gonna be a way to keep every ounce of smell in, but it shouldn't be, you shouldn't be consistently, like, every time you drive on the freeway right there, you shouldn't be smelling it. You're, it's hit and miss on, you know, on a delivery day.
I can never smell it.
Yeah, me neither, so. It's the super smellers of the world, they're like, oh, you smell it, I'm like, nope.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
I have one.
I have one, I have one, I have one.
Okay, Charles, go ahead.
I was just curious, I can't see the slide that Patrick's got up there and I don't have really a packet with me, but I'm just curious if we're doing, uh, block and rod iron uh, for security around it, like across the highway there, the other buildings, is, is there something like that going in?
It's all rod iron.
It's white.
It's rod iron all the way around. It's a solid rod iron fence.
Is it gonna be on block or just straight?
We couldn't understand you.
Rod iron.
You're cutting out.
I think he's wondering if it's gonna be partially block and rod iron or all rod iron?
No, it's currently as it stands, all rod iron. It's a beautiful building.
That answer your question, um, Charles, or we're losing him?
Died out. Ma'am.
Okay.
Hello?
There you are.
Okay, did that answer your question, it's all rod iron?
I'm standing on a corner in Winslow, Arizona. Hard time with internet.
I think that's it. Madam Chair, I do have one more question, it's administrative procedural.
Go ahead.
Uh, can I just get Mr. Goodmanson to confirm that he is the agent for this owner? Uh, if you could come up to the mic so I can get you on record, Sean, please. I noted in the application that the first page says Sean Goodmanson or Goodmanson Consulting.
Correct.
But then when you signed on page two, it was signing individually as Sean Goodmanson. Can you insert Goodmanson Consulting above your signature on that certification?
We can, I'm a sole proprietor, so I, I had a fictitious business name, so I am one of the same with that, so it could go either way.
Speaking, your signature has to have the fact that it's Sean, it's Goodmanson Consulting actually signing and you're the one that's authorized to sign on their behalf. So would you mind, when you have a chance, uh, maybe seeing Patrick, it doesn't have to be done tonight, just putting your name in the application on page two, the consulting firm?
Whatever's required of me.
What Mr. Wolsey would have indicated, because his signature appears after that part of the application, the part that says it's Goodmanson Consulting, okay?
Yeah, I think it says four, so that, no, whatever you guys need me to do, that's fine, that's simple.
Okay, settled that issue.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on, uh, thank you Cheryl.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Um, are there any other commission questions for the staff? If not, I'll move to, uh, open the public hearing, is there a public comment? No? I can't see the, Dale, is there anyone coming up to speak?
No.
No, Your Honor, no one's coming up.
All right, so I'll, I'll close the, uh, public hearing and move on to the, yes?
If I might, um, architectural, uh, treatment, uh, can come in a number of different ways. It can come in the form of, of a pop out, as we've heard described. Uh, it can form, come in the form of color, it can come in the form of different texture, like adding fake rock at the bottom. What, what the, the staff, the commission and the council have done has reviewed what people have proposed and either found that acceptable or not acceptable. We are not in the building design business, so we don't, um, we don't require specifics other than that they be one of those different, uh, architectural treatments. So the, the coloration, uh, is an architectural treatment. Uh, whether pop out is, can be an architectural treatment. And, and I, I'd just like to go on record that I think the, um, the Taco Bell buildings are the best architectural treatment of anything we've seen, because unless you really focus, I mean, it's bas, it's basically just a metal building back there, but it has these beautiful, um, uh, pop outs or wraparounds that make it distinctive and as such, the probably best looking. And that was proposed by then.
Yeah, and, and I think too, we don't wanna get into the whole designing their building, as long as they're. And, and at the same time, um, I guess for myself, I just wanna make sure that what we get in our packets are actually what is being proposed, because sometime, like the landscaping is different, we didn't get that. So if there's a color differration, diff, uh, differration or something else proposed, as long as we know when it's happening, that's, but yeah, I, I don't wanna get into designing their buildings either. I think the building looks really nice, so they should do a great job with it. So, okay, any other questions or deliberation from the commission? If not, I'll ask for an approval.
Uh, Madam Chair, real quick. I wanna make sure that we're clear on these, uh, conditions. So on condition number fifty-five, we're gonna include, um, painted in alternating stripes of light and dark gray, the existing building to be painted gold, a gold color. Um, number fifty-six, we're gonna add, shall be masked with the new skin architectural treatment. Number sixty-four, we're adding to include CO2 tanks on the front of the building to add a black awning over CO2 tanks and paint the awning over the front door of the existing building black. And then number sixty-five, the property will be fenced with a six-foot rod iron, uh, that will be, uh, fence of the six foot, uh, rod iron fence to be installed along the entire property boundary.
Yeah, and I think that's already in there, isn't it, the rod iron fence?
Uh, if not, uh, we're just clarifying it right now. My understanding is that it was left out, so we wanted to, we wanted to make sure we made it a condition. Even though it is on the rendering, uh, that's being provided as a record, we just wanna ensure that it's an actual condition.
Okay, so I would ask for a motion to approve with those conditions?
I'll make a motion to approve this with Planning Commission. Um, resolution number ten dash nineteen dash twenty twenty-two P C recommending to the city council approval of conditional use permit, adding a twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and one square foot building for cannabis cultivation totaling thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-four square feet, locating it at two thousand, or two hundred and eleven Balboa Street, also known as A P N zero six six zero dash zero eight one dash two seven zero 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 in the C-three zone with the conditions already mentioned by Patrick.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Will. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you wanna, you wanna call it, Dale?
Uh, it's unanimous, Commissioner Wright, Beard and Osby voted aye.
And I'll, I'll vote aye.
And Commissioner Bosom.
Aye.
And Commissioner Dressler.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so that passed unanimously. Congratulations Cheryl and Sean, I think it'll be a real nice, uh, asset to the city. Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of an amendment to conditional use permit zero na, zero nine dash zero one dash two zero two one dash two P C, reducing the cannabis cultivation area by two thousand, five hundred and eleven square feet and adding a two thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine square foot retail cannabis business to be located at twenty-seven oh one Columbus Drive, also known as A P N zero six six zero dash zero eight one dash three zero dash zero 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 in the C-two general commercial zone. Staff report.
Madam Chair and members of the planning commission in front of you, we have the resolution ten dash nineteen dash twenty twenty-two dash one P C for twenty-seven oh one Columbus. Uh, as previously stated by the chair, we have a conditional use permit in front of you recommending the city council that we're gonna reduce an existing C U P and add a retail business. The reason, some of you have asked me, haven't we seen this before, why is this coming back to us? So anytime that existing C U P at a facility has an entitlement that is new, a different type of use, so cultivation, distribution, retail lounge, all those different types of things, you have to add the C U P entitlement for that new use. And so that's why you're seeing this in front of you today. I just wanted to get that clarified, uh, for the planning commission, because I was asked by a few. So I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. At twenty-seven one Columbus Drive, uh, in the C-two commercial zone. So it is located, uh, in the C-two zone, directly across from the I, the forty freeway. Basically a but commercial, zoning a little bit in vicinity map. The existing site already has two, uh, retail, well, to the south is commercial, to the east is, uh, R C C, to the west is open space. And so you've got more commercial and R C C to your north. Let's, let's scoot in a little bit. So looking at the site itself, as you can see, it's already got two existing cannabis cultivation ability, buildings that's already been talked about a little bit tonight, uh, with the architectural pop outs. And so totaling two thousand, seven hundred, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven square feet. And then you've got this Taco Bell site that has since been demolished. So a little bit of background, we kind of already gone through all of it, but, uh, the C U P for resolutions zero nine dash zero one dash twenty twenty-one dash two P C will be, uh, uh, downsized to remove, uh, square footage, uh, to include the new cannabis facility. So that's a little bit of background in front of you. So it's a two point one seven, seven acre project site currently being developed that already has cannabis cultivation on the site. Project will employ six full-time employees and will operate seven days a week, ten A M to seven P M. And is, uh, consistent with the general plan and zoning, so this per, this permitted use is available. So looking at the existing, uh, site plan, you can see the two cannabis cultivations and then the existing Taco Bell that has since been demolished. Looking at the promos, uh, proposed site plan.
Patrick, I hate to interrupt, but I can't see the site plan on my screen.
Excuse me, sorry. Appreciate you interrupting me. There we go, let's try this, so.
Okay.
You didn't miss much, here's the site, the vicinity map, aerial map, these are all part of your packet, but it's good to go over them. So the two existing cannabis sites with the Taco Bell that has since been demolished. And so I talked a little bit about the resolution and the zoning. And then here's the existing site plan, as I talked about, there's two cultivation facilities already operational today on the site. And there was a Taco Bell restaurant here in the lower side that no longer exists. So looking at the proposed site plan, I don't want you to focus on the two, uh, buildings. And really, I don't even wanna, uh, focus on this, there, uh, this fourth building that they're identifying, but really gonna focus on this little third building right here. Uh, that's the two thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine square feet of retail. And so it is a two-phase project, it is, this building itself, these two buildings are already entitled, but the real project site that we're talking about is this little building right here. And so looking at the floor plans, you can see that the, it's a two-story retail business. The first floor is a check-in room, retail vault, customer, uh, the customer area, office space, a display case area, break room and a bathroom, that's on the first floor. And then this other full area is not part of the project, it's actually a fourth building. And then you've got the second floor, which has a foyer, utility room, their D V R system and office space. And so it's a two-story, uh, project. So the landscape plan, which your packet did not have the legend, so I wanna take this opportunity to introduce Dawn Cavello, she's our new planner. So we've been using somebody out of house, there's no excuse, I take full responsibility, cause I get these packets out. But in the future, I do reassure you all that we will have everything you need in these packets moving forward. But looking at this landscape plan, the project will improve the existing landscape plan that's already been at the site with shrubs, Texas Rangers, red yucca trees, uh, as purple plums, uh, covering, and then again, the sunshine links from Asher Tur, river rock and gravel to be going around the property. Uh, we're, we're seeing a theme here and the, it looks, uh, very, the landscape plan looks very familiar. But again, we're talking about this, this area right here, um, the frontage of Columbus, uh, to be talking about this project in the gray. I just wanna make sure we're specific. Again, here's some elevations of what we're looking at, the, uh, this twenty-three hundred square foot store, you see some masonary stucco, um, proposed elevation from the north. Um, here's just a, uh, enhancement of what we're looking at with the buildings and what we're looking like. Elevations from the west.
It was pretty fast.
What's that, normally go back, yes ma'am, no problem. So this is what we're looking at, the elevations, uh, from the front. And then again, this is from the west, you didn't see me, uh, within twelve months, that's what we're doing. But it's important to be fully transparent, that's why we wanted to just be part of the package. And then the east side, again, you can see from the front tempered glass, enhancement, uh, metal panels from the front. And then again, an enlarged east elevation. And then from the south, you're gonna see that building, this, uh, building can, you know, the third building, uh, dispenser, bonus area. And so just looking at some of the pictures, we're all familiar with, we talked about this already, but here's the existing, uh, two buildings that are at the site, just the Taco Bell, um, area that's the building that's been demolished, again, seeing from the west, same project. And then you're seeing it from the south, same project with that, uh, demolished Taco Bell site that's still over there. And then this is from the Carl's Jr. area from the north, looking over at the project and see that the third building will be going at that site. And so here's just some of their color schemes that they've provided to us, we just wanna make sure we had, that this is part of a packet or is the presentation, cause it wasn't in the packet. So some of the added conditions very much of the same, the initial use permit will contain a cultivation license, prior operating, uh, metal surfaces shall be masked, architecture and treatment. And then the proposed twenty-three hundred, uh, ninety-nine square foot dispensary shall be painted with earth tone, uh, for the building siding. And this is what we're looking at in terms of a rendering. This was not part of your packet, so you don't have it. But we do have it for you in this presentation. We'll note that a wrought iron fence, six-foot wrought iron fence. Will be provided in this area. As you can see, and we will add that as one of the conditions as well. But it's sliding. All right, so approved Resolution Number ten dash nineteen dash twenty twenty-two dash one P C. Recommend the City Council Approval of an Amendment to the Conditional Use Permit zero nine zero one dash twenty twenty-one dash two P C. Reducing the cultivation area by twenty-five hundred and eleven square feet. Adding twenty-three hundred ninety-nine square foot retail cannabis business located at twenty-seven oh one Columbus Drive. Also known as A P N zero six six zero zero eight one dash three zero dash zero 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 in the C two. That does conclude my presentation. The applicant is also here. Do you want to speak to her as well? Now, now, Sam, any questions that you might have?
Okay, does the applicant want to come up and introduce herself? And then if anyone has any questions?
It's Cheryl again, Cheryl Montanez. Do I have to give my address again? Five two six eight Dulce Palmis, Delane, California.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Cheryl?
Let me basically sum it up. It, that whole footprint was already approved. That's where you saw me before, for the third building. So that entire exact same footprint was already approved. What we are doing is going back slicing off that front bump out. To make it the dispensary. And we're gonna build that first and then build the other building. It, it's actually two separate buildings, but it'll look as one.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I am probably the one and only guilty party that asked, hasn't this come before us? I was referring to the last time Cheryl was here, and that had to do with the project across the freeway. That's what I was questioning about, okay? Not this one. So.
There was confusion though, because it came back through. Yeah.
No, I don't think any, oh, there were. Okay, so I'm not the only one that thought that. Okay, I don't feel so bad. I'll be able to sleep tonight. Okay. Okay, so this, what future permit?
It's because it's two separate permits, the one building one. So that's already got a, I already have a C U P for that building. But I'm changing that C U P to say we're having a dispensary for the little building. And then that future permit, because then I had to change all my old plans and submit my building and safety plans to match this new.
Is this going in relation to the?
Go back to that elevation.
Because we don't have a rendering or anything.
Yeah, you do. Well, well, it was in the old. So when I, so this site plan, so the big box behind the little box is.
I can't, I can't keep up with what you're doing.
So.
Where, where is the one we're talking about tonight?
The front grade.
Oh, the little tiny one down.
That little tiny baby thing we're talking about is what we're getting approved right now. That back section was already approved with the original C U P. We're just amending, correct. So that's a separate permit for building and safety. We're not talking about any cultivation. We're only talking about the retail.
So how tall is the little tiny one we're talking about tonight?
Okay, can you go to my, oh, I have it.
I've seen the standard about twenty-six feet, but I'd like to know.
Yes. I can't read.
And I'd also like to know.
Twenty-seven.
The height of this one?
Yeah, twenty-seven feet on your, twenty-seven. It, we, so the, I think one of the rendering shows the back building behind it, and this is where you're isolating it. Can you go? So see in this elevation?
I don't have that.
So you see the tallest part? That's the back part that matches his other buildings already.
I'm behind you, okay?
So where the tallest parapet is?
Yes.
Back is that building that's grayed out. That's the cultivation section. So the front, see, that's a little shorter. That's just some of the architectural enhancement. We didn't need to be that tall.
That back one says twenty-four foot, oh, going across.
That's the other, that's the cultivation building. So the little building in the front, the little sliver at the left of the page. That height is twenty-seven feet.
So how tall is the one next to it? Is that just, that's just a facade that's, um.
Yeah, the height of the fir- the, no, go there, yeah, that one.
On this one?
Yeah, that's.
It's gonna be thirty-six.
Thirty-six?
That's the parapet is thirty-six, the building itself. Patrick, if you can read on the other side.
Says it's twenty-nine feet on the plan.
Thirty feet. So the cultivation building is thirty feet, and then that parapet is a little higher?
The parapet is what I'm talking about.
Yeah. So what was that again, Patrick? Sorry. Thirty-six foot is the highest.
Okay.
So that matches the buildings that are there.
The next parapet is lower. How tall is the next parapet?
Thirty-three. Thirty-three.
Okay. Okay, so. Did, so when you gave notice for everybody within three hundred feet. In my opinion, I saw no homes anywhere in this area, no residences anywhere, okay? So, um, when you gave the three hundred notice, it went, I assume to Carl's Jr. Did it go, there's a motel there. What's, which motel is that?
Rio.
Rio de Sol. Did they get included in the three hundred feet?
I believe so. We purchased those as a package. So do you, I don't know if you have the radius map in your packet.
Well, this says that everybody within.
Three hundred.
Public hearing notice was published in the Needles as it star on Wednesday, October five. Notices were also sent to property owners within three hundred feet of the proposed project and posted into conspicuous locations. So that is relevant for tonight, okay? So my question is, did that motel get included? In that three hun- is that three hundred feet from the little tiny building we're dealing with tonight?
Well, it doesn't matter that it's the little tiny building. It's my property line. So you have to use your property line. So it's the same people that I've, I'm a prob- my, what is this, my fourth time here on this site? So yeah, it's the same list. They're all getting notified.
Okay, because I have a whole new, new issue.
Okay, let's go.
And I want to make sure it's at least mentioned tonight, although it's not gonna stop anything you're doing. I want to make a record of it, okay? When you have tall buildings and big buildings, which is going to include this one ultimately. And this one next to it, okay? Have you ever heard of refractive sound, refractive noise? Okay. I have an issue with that. And it, we brought it up when the gentleman applied for a cultivation facility down off North K. And El, whatever it was, up against the track or the freeway embankment down there a few months ago. And I brought it up then, okay? Because I had started learning about it. When you put big, tall buildings next to each other, you have all kinds of noise refraction. Bouncing off of those tall buildings and structures and going whatever way it goes. Based on the shape of the building and the way it faces.
Right.
Okay? And people are also having problems with the ones down across from the Elks that face the I forty, right down on the freeway, the big one. With noise across this highway, the freeway, based on the, and I'm pretty sure it's refractive noise they're hearing. Because I don't think up close, it's a problem. There are no houses around there, okay? Close by, that close by anyway. So that's why I'm asking about the motel. No residences. But if I checked into that motel and heard all the cannabis fans going. Am I going to be able to sleep at night? And also, have we dealt with this in giving notice to people like that? Now, that's kind of a rhetorical question as far as you're concerned. Because I don't know what is relevant as far as the conditions are concerned that have to do with noise. I tried to figure out at the last minute, where is the stuff about the noise in your packet? I couldn't find it, speed reading it. Because I had forgot to ask that, because I couldn't determine exactly how tall these things were, or I couldn't see. So just so you know, I'm concerned about noise in surrounding areas that's refractive. I think when you're running a cannabis business, you're concerned about some noise to the surrounding properties. And also noise within the, the building, that because you have employees that are gonna be subjected to it all day long, twenty-four, seven, whatever. But I'm concerned about refractive noise. Okay? Because it's not just the immediate area, it's the freeway noise bouncing off.
Usually refractive noise is referring to the freeway traffic driving by, bouncing off the building and coming back. By us putting it in a triangle, it's actually going in and coming right back to the freeway. So I would venture to say that Carl's Jr. will have less noise once these buildings go up. Because right now, the noise is hitting the building and going that way. Now it's gonna hit that building, hit that building, and kind of.
Yeah, I don't care about.
Go back. I, I understand what I'm saying. So the only refractive noise you're really gonna be getting is Carl's Jr. Car traffic bouncing off the back of my building and back to the hotel, motel.
So.
But it's not gonna grab traffic noise and throw it over the building.
Right? I forty.
Mm-mm, it matches. It follows.
Or kind of like that.
It follow, that's why we're a triangle? No, it follows the bend of the triangle. See, up there? I mean, that one street goes that way, but it's kind of that side of the triangle. So go like this.
Like this.
No, this. Yes.
Okay, it's going like that.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. That noise goes boom onto my.
It's gonna go into the big buildings up against the embankment.
And push back into the freeway.
Okay, so it's not gonna go over here?
So that's what I'm saying right now. The noise would come in, maybe hit those buildings, and you might have some side noise going off toward that direction. That building in the, what you're bringing up with the refractive, that building's actually probably going to make more of a sound barrier for them. Because the only thing now that's gonna bounce off that is Carl's Jr. But really, it's that corner, so I don't know what.
Well, refractive noise in my experience, which is daily. I'm getting the railroad that I couldn't get before.
Right.
I lived on Broadway, but I'm getting noise from the railroad. And I'm getting noise from the I forty that I could barely hear or if at all before. So it's coming from a distance away and bouncing off the ends of buildings and enhancing the noise that spreads way.
Instead of just keep going, it's hitting something and coming back at you, so you're getting it like twice.
Right.
So that's why you're now able to hear. That's what I'm saying. This is all bouncing back into the freeway, so I don't think we would be really affecting. It's, there isn't a train, you know what I mean? It's whatever noise is around you. It's not noise from the facility. It's the traffic and things that are bouncing back.
I would feel badly if we didn't take into consideration, there's a motel there with people trying to sleep that's really close. So I just want to make a record that I brought it up.
Good job. Thank you.
Um, I don't think I have anything further.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? If not, um, thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Okay, Commission, questions of the staff? Any further questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment?
None, Your Honor.
I see none, uh, so we'll close the public hearing. And any other discussion or deliberation? By the Commission? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the Resolution ten nineteen dash twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution. On, for a conditional use permit number nine dash zero one dash two twenty, twenty twenty-one dash two. P C, reducing the cannabis cultivation area by twenty-five hundred and eleven square feet. And adding a twenty-three ninety-nine square foot cannabis retail business to be located at twenty-seven oh one Columbus Drive. Also known as A P N zero six six zero zero eight one thirty zero 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 in the C two general commercial zone.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Six ayes.
That's unanimous, then it passes. Thank you. Again, congratulations, Cheryl. Okay, we'll move on to board requests. We'll start with Michael.
I have one question. I'm wondering, I try to keep track. Has the, have we? Are we going through the process restructuring the tax? On these cannabis facilities by square footage?
Madam Chair, might I respond to that?
Yes.
I'm very brief, but we'll give you more information in writing. The council directed me to take a look at, um, an improvement to the cannabis collection. Which is, we were one of the pioneers in the collection of, of cannabis taxes. And the voters in twenty twelve approved a ten percent of grocery receipts. Now, the collection of ten percent of grocery receipts is very difficult in a business which is all catch. Because there's no bank accounts to triangulate against. And no access to what's being reported at state. Which is on a, on a square foot basis. So taxing agencies that have followed us, um, they're about split about. Or they're split about some use square foot, some use, um, percentage of income. Percentage of gross revenue. So I figured that the, so much per square foot was the simplest. Way and most reliable way, because it was whatever the number is, times square foot. You'd almost teach monkey to do that. When we looked at it, we found that there were, uh, existing, when we looked at the existing businesses. That there was a variation of seven dollars per square foot to fifty-three dollars per square foot. Being actually generated. That's too wide of a band of variables. So, uh, we met with, with the cultivators and they couldn't agree. Uh, so we deferred on making the tax change now. And are continuing to research that. Because, uh, one of the cultivators actually told me, Rick, the system is. Manipulatable. The way it is now. Now, so what we have is we've hired as an auditor this year. A company that specializes in cannabis audits. So we're gonna get some expertise. So we won't be using a standard auditor like you use on the general fund or the N P A. Which is all numbers to make sure every, all the numbers are in the right place. This will be more of a substantive audit. So that, those audits are underway. For the twenty-one, uh, calendar year. So.
Oh, for the eye of twenty-one.
Yeah, oh, I, I should have the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. So the year behind us. And then my guess is, my intuition tells me that we'll come, we'll come back with a. A more effective and reliable tax correction system. Because I don't believe we have.
So that means hiring someone else. We're gonna have two auditors then?
No, we're gonna have, uh, well, we always had a, a, another audit firm do cannabis. But we had an audit company that, uh, did more of traditional auditing. As opposed to now, we're having a cannabis specialist auditor, an auditing firm that specializes in cannabis. So no more auditors, just better and more qualified.
I'm, I'm not really clear on where we got the different variables from, from seven to fifty-three. Where did we get those?
Well, we took a look at, um, what people's canopy was. Which is the licensed area for cannabis cultivation, minus support facilities. We took a look at building size. We took a look at, at amount of tax generated last year. And divided it by those two factors. And we came up with ranges from seven dollars a square foot.
Based on however much.
To fifty-three. And that's too wide of a band.
It's not consistent enough.
No, and it, and, and it, it was contrary, which surprised me. If you would have think, you would have thought that there would be better performance in bigger buildings. Economy escape, but they were all over the place. And then you thought maybe, well, there are some that are selling their product because they are a higher quality. But we couldn't distinguish that either. So, um.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, because you're gonna have, there's gonna be lots of different qualities that they're selling it for. Like, you're being taxed on the actual sales. I'm not sure how you would get around that, but there's gotta be.
But you do, you do it by square foot.
Actual sales.
Well, but, um. Sales are not a dependable denominator to use. Because it's. because it's reported saves. Self-reported saves.
But if, if you're doing inventories, you would know how much was sold.
We do know how much inventories are, are grown and uh, the problem is there's too many loopholes in the existing system. We, we were pioneers and we put together something that nobody else had done. And many people mimicked us. And, but in time, it is, um, I think by square foot is gonna be more effective way because the square foot is the square foot. And you, you pick a number that generates you the same amount of revenue and you just translate that to so much per square foot. But right now, it's, the bandwidth was too broad.
Mister, Mister Daniels, I have a question, because you're talking square foot, not cubic foot. Now, if we do that, I think that what that might happen is it's gonna zoom the height of these buildings because this marijuana can be grown. I, I just toured one. Uh, my wife and I just toured a large one here about five days ago. And larger buildings, I mean, you've got more canopy, there's different ways to grow it and things and that. That's something to think about.
It is. And that, that's a complicating factor. Um, because right now, um, but there is a maximum building height.
Right.
The city.
Right.
But at the same time, we are seeing twenty thousand square foot where instead of just a pot on the ground, they've got pots three-
Right.
Three high.
Yeah, exactly.
So, but we would have to figure out, you know, we'd have to do a different, we'd have to find a better measurement.
But that, to me, could be some of the difference that you were talking about in this five to fifty-something in square foot.
We don't have any multiple foot.
Well, yeah, that's true.
Well, this particular one built up the ground. I don't know how many feet before they actually started putting in the steel barriers. I asked Patrick, why, how many? I don't know how many feet up they built it, in addition, their building went on top of that. So we gained a lot of footage on the ground level.
So, and that's-
Rick, I have a question for you, if I might. Uh, you mentioned that they do have a record of the quantity that they're producing. Might it be possible to tax them on the pounds or whatever measurement there is of quantity of product that's actually produced at the facility instead of square footage or what's sold, if there's a record of how much they're producing?
Well, the, the problem with the records are, they self, it's self-reported.
I wonder if there's any pause.
I thought during our inter, um, when we went to monitor these, we had a number of plants that they're planting. They have to keep track of what, like, um, medical pharmacy, they have to keep track of what they waste. You'd have, you'd have a number of plants, what they wasted, so that would give you a percentage of what they're actually uh, harvesting. So wouldn't then your sales be based on what they're harvesting?
Um, uh, the, the conclusion is that there are too many variables, but, and this is now getting so far into the discussion that it may be warrants-
Well, I was gonna say-
An agenda item later.
But I, I think that's really interesting, but yeah, I'm not sure that square footage is the way to go, but I think there's gotta be a better way to inventory it. So anyway, it's a good question, Michael.
Yeah.
Well, back to my point is, I think that if they, say you have a single level and you're just counting that square footage, and they add another level or another, you add that square footage, right?
Yeah.
So that's why I think the square footage deserves to be looked at. Because you're, you're not, it's not based on whether they make money or not, there's still that square footage.
Well, there's, there is no, Madam Chair, there is no perfect solution.
Right.
So each measurement mechanism, we have to figure, we have to take out um, the ability to under-recall. And, and I'm looking for a system that requires the fewest uh, bodies and cost. Uh, or else we'll spend, you know, a hundred thousand dollars chasing profit. But, but it, but it's, it's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy solution and we have a system that is providing last year over five million dollars.
I remember when we first were drafting our very first resolution, um, researching about how to collect the money and make sure that it was legitimate sales. And that was just for dispensaries, not cultivation. And they had, and were coming, a lot of them were coming out of Denver, out of Colorado at the time, new laws were being made and whatnot. And none of them could figure out a sure-fireproof way or sure-proof way to keep track, keep everybody honest. They had security cameras, they had this, they had that, there were all kinds of different things that had been tried, and they still had a lot of unreported
Yeah, but it, it is, uh, but we, I don't want you to think that we have a-
Right.
A fraudulent system, because what we have has produced uh, considerably for this community. And you're right, there, we were pioneers and, uh, and created systems that didn't exist anywhere else. But we're gonna, we need to refine ourselves.
Good to learn.
Create that better mousetrap. And I think what's been done by the, the decision-makers in this community are, is really been outstanding. And we just need to continue to seek perfection or better.
I think the third-party auditor.
And I still can't smell any of it anywhere. And I know I've had a couple people complain, I've gone to you. Uh, I don't know what happened after that, I didn't follow up on it, but I didn't hear that same complaint again. Um, as close as some of those buildings are to where I live, I never smell it. And Bernie pointed out to me one time that the odor, I kinda changed the subject, didn't I? A lot of people aren't familiar, familiar with the fact that we're smell, they, some people are smelling burning pot from people smoking it outside.
Could be, but there, there are some buildings that are not seen.
Let's go back, let's go back to the, uh, request. So, Michael, that was your question. Did you have anything else?
No, that's all, thank you.
Okay, Barbara?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Kevin?
Yes, I have a couple questions. Um, and these are of, of, of the city manager. Um, quite a while ago, and I know I've asked before, um, there was a downtown mixed-use project, a very large one, of both residential and commercial. And, and I know they had extensions and things, but I haven't seen anything or heard anything. Is that gone now, or is it still barely hanging?
Let me ask Patrick, uh, because he's been in, in contact.
Yeah, so very exciting news. Uh, we're, we, they resubmitted. They're waiting for us to give them their comments back. They're doing a sewer study uh, right now, because the way our sewer system's set up, we have to make sure that there's a wa, enough water capacity in certain facilities, and we, uh, work with rainy torrents. I need our engineer to work on that, so we're finishing that up. And that's gonna be given back to the applicant. Uh, but basically, they, they, uh, met and continued to meet compliance. Additionally, I was contacted by the, one of the owners of the project last week, and they wanted, um, data on our housing, uh, currently, because they wanted more information on what we have going on here in our city. And so, uh, Mr. Daniels put out a nice email to, uh, someone earlier a couple weeks ago, and I just took some of that, that, you know, all the data that we have. We have really good housing data. I don't know if you guys have seen it, wanna send it over to you. But, you know, so there's pamphlets and the, you know, the investor packets and all. We do a really, uh, nice job of putting together all the data and giving it to them, so they've asked for that.
Right.
So I'm, I'm also gonna connect them with our economists to start picking their brain, because they, you know, they wanted to know what's the needed needles, and I said, well, let me tell you. And I share a lot of stuff my, uh, my boss has provided to other folks.
Okay. And then I had one more, um, in the, in the manager's report that we, we get on email. Um, one, there was one thing mentioned about, um, converting commercial to residential. You were working on a project, so I was just curious about that.
Right, well, one of the, one of the, uh, multiple changes in state law, uh, while the legislature was in session and no man or woman's house is safe, um, was, and I think it's been primarily driven by downtown office space.
Right.
Which has to be the worst business to be in now, because people aren't using offices in the traditional way. So there are sky, uh, there are large buildings downtown LA and all major US cities, but in California, that are vacant. So the legislature added a provision that, uh, overrode local uh, zoning to allow residential in commercial buildings. And the idea is that, uh, bricks and mortar stores are lessening because of the, the, uh,
Online.
Online. Uh, and offices are not as, that needed as much. So the legislature stepped in and, um, against better judgment, they, they overrode zoning laws. And we will get a copy of that piece of legislation and distribute it to council. But it opens up commercial areas to housing.
Can we get a copy of that also?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'll do. I'll get it to them.
Wonderful.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's it for me.
Could you repeat that?
Very good. Charles, are you on? You're muted.
Yeah, I'm on, I, uh, right now.
Okay, do you have any, uh, thing? Council requests or commission requests?
No, I don't have nothing right now.
Okay, Will?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Okay, neither do I. Managers report?
Um, we are having a, uh, a, a number of meetings, uh, with housing developers. Um, but, and, and I think we have, you know, one has proposed two hundred apartment units on Hill Street that we're doing an initial assessment with them on. Another is, uh, looking at, uh, four or five lots up by, on, uh, Clary Street, uh, south of, mainly south of the apartments between there and the rodeo grounds.
What type of thing?
What's that?
What type of apartments or housing?
Uh, they wanna do four duplexes. Uh, workforce housing. So, um, but we are also, uh, this last legislative session, there were, there was a lot of attention to housing regulation, but there was also a lot of attention to providing funding for affordable housing. Now, on affordable, that's anybody who earns less than sixty thousand a year. Our median household income is forty-two thousand. That's the most frequent income in this community. So we're basically talking about the bulk by far of the population. And when you look at our housing shortage, uh, it's most pronounced in that workforce housing group. So they, they passed hundreds of millions of dollars of new housing funding for things like first-time homebuyers, um, grants of loans. They, they become a twenty thousand dollar loan that gets tagged on the end of your thirty-year mortgage. So you pay it off at the end, but you get the capital to get into the game. Um, there was hundreds of millions of dollars for that program. There were, uh, housing projects or, uh, funding for, uh, multifamily, especially near transit lines, uh, where loans are made directly to the builder and collateralized by the development. Then there are other loans that are aimed at very, or not loans, there's a program aimed at very low income where they provide the Section Eight housing certificate that is good for up to, let's say, six hundred dollars of rent. Uh, that, that, but that's very low, and that's, that's, we are ver, pretty well covered on very low. So it's that low moderate that is missing. Now, they put hundreds of millions of dollars towards housing. The federal government has put billions of dollars towards housing loan or housing programs. Cities are eligible for some of that money. But agencies which it's aimed at are housing authorities. Now, there are two housing authorities in San Bernardino County. One countywide and one, the Needles Housing Authority. So we are working with the Needles Housing Authority to get them engaged to go after that billions and hundreds of millions to, to help finance. Uh, and you know, it's all, you know, double guaranteed and, and bonded and, uh, there's all kinds of protections that, uh, to try and get some money into this community, because the natural market is not providing. And i- it's perplexed me, and we, we talked to housing developers and bankers trying to figure out that mystery. But, uh, we need workforce housing because of the five hundred and fifty people just working in the cannabis business, four hundred live across the river. We're going to have between thirty-five and fifty new employees working at the Hampton Inn. There's no place for those people to live in this community. So, uh, it is a high priority to energize the Needles Housing.
Do you think that there are no people being attracted to build because of the cost of the construction materials and the hangup with the transportation supply chain?
Well, there, there is, but that should show up on both sides of the river. It's that problem. But there is a problem in California. For example, new houses are required to have, uh, a sprinkler system. That's not required across here, that's twenty thousand. Um, on the permitting, um, it, it, there's often a sequin analysis required. California environmental quality. So that's why when we do the general plan, we wanna pre-zone the property that, where we want housing, and that'll take off the builders and developers having to come in and get a rezone. Instead, you will look at the general plan, which will take a holistic look at the community and identify where you want housing and where you want commercial. And then the state, in their wisdom, basically, there is no, there are no more exclusive single-family zones, which is the backbone of zoning laws from the get-go. Because you can get an accessory dwelling in, a casita, automatically.
That's statewide.
Yeah, I know. And, uh, not only that, you can, you're allowed to convert a garage or, or add on to the building. And then you can even build a second standalone dwelling on what used to be a single-family zone. And so the state has basically eliminated the traditional single, uh, eight, ten thousand square foot single-family home lot. It's, um, which is-
That's why they live across the river though, too. I mean, that's, a lot of it is California.
Yeah, it, it, Californians are, are worse than, um, these regions. So, what we need to do is be very efficient in the permitting process. And, uh, we have, as you know, in the Economic Development Fund, we do ten percent towards, uh, to attract non-cannabis businesses. The council last year decided to allow, to add home building as part of it. Because it does create jobs. Now, there might be twenty-five people during a four, six-month period. Uh, so they're not- Uh, so they're not ongoing jobs, but uh, they are jobs and for example, and that grant from the Economic Development Fund could be used to offset building costs.
I have a question for you, Rick, if I might. So, does this mean that, uh, I, I understand the need of housing for uh, people that wanna move into the area, but does that mean that we're gonna be stuck having to put multi-story apartment buildings up? Because of the zoning changes restricting single-family home zoning, so automatically if it's more for a moderate or low-income fo- folks by default, it's automatically gonna be multi-story apartment buildings or apartment buildings?
No, uh, because you, we still have the height limit uh, ability, we can limit the height of any building. And while there, there are no more single-family zones, exclusively single-family zones, that doesn't make them eligible for apartments. You can still, this, the, the local governments can still regulate the density of development.
Well, yeah, because when we did the housing, um
Right.
We, we had a certain percentage that you're kind of required for low income and things, and we've met that. So I think that's what Needles has to be really cautious about, in that we keep a balance of kind of middle, you know, middle to upper or aging um, communities too, because th- those are the people that are looking for houses now and can't find them, and that's why they end up across the river.
Well, the
I think we need to really keep in mind a balance of that and not just end up with low-income apartments.
Uh, nobody is, nobody is saying or advocating low-income apartments.
Yeah.
Uh, but we need, we need, we need housing for the workforce that's here and that we're missing out. I got a call two years ago from city manager in Bullhead, said, Ricky, gotta stop. He said, you've created a zero vacancy rate in our apartments. And, um but we need, we need, we need housing that people earning from forty-five to ninety thousand dollars can afford, which is above our median household income, but two of these, um uh, because the, the hotel's not gonna be paying more than that. Uh, or small business, they're not paying more than that. So we need something that where somebody can generate enough income to pay the eight hundred to twelve hundred dollar rent or mortgage payment. And that is a twelve to fifteen hundred square foot, single-family home. That is
The duplexes.
A duplex.
I know.
Uh, uh, but, uh, yeah, and and it's, and by the way, there's a great article that I, I sent to Patrick earlier today that, uh, I think we're only one of three jurisdictions in San Bernardino County that have met their housing element adoption. And we are only one of thirty-three, I think it is, in entire Southern California. Which I think positions us to be a very attractive so, uh, destination for this housing money.
I lived in apartments a good part of my life, and part of it had to do with budget. Uh, in Santa Monica, I ended up renting houses, but uh, for the most part, I lived in apartments and condos. My condo in Huntington Beach was on Huntington Harbor, it, uh, a lo- over my loft overlooked the ocean. Um, and it was not too far from PCH, but near Bolsacica Beach. And the taco joint that sold sea fish tacos that were great, um, not off a food truck. But apartment dwelling for me was always wonderful and comfortable. I didn't have the i- issues that a lot of people do have with apartments, because I was relatively, in relatively nice areas. Um, we didn't have the problems that we have now. I, one of the first places I went when I moved here was River Gardens. Because it looked like, it was apartments, first of all, and it looked like relatively attractive grounds in the front. And then, of course, I was told I didn't qualify, because I made too much money, and what the heck are you doing here? And they were really rude, I even pulled up. Um, but then I found out that low-income people lived there, you had to qualify. And I do know what the crime rate is there as well. So one thing can produce another, depending on the circumstances, but in my experience, apartments are wonderful. They were a blessing, they can be huge, big square footage and gorgeous. And I think that, uh, that twelve hundred dollar a month rent or eight, that would be six hundred each if you had two guys in there working the cannabis buildings, even three, okay? So I don't know what the maximum might work out to be in an apartment complex, but I believe in two-story. Like River, River Gardens is two-story, and I don't think that takes up sky area where we would be upset with an apartment complex like that in a different location. So anyway, I'm for apartment buildings to keep our workers in town.
In the right place.
Yes, in the right place.
It, location is everything.
Rick, if I might, again, I have another question for you, what you just hit on about location. Another option is, uh, today's mo- a lot of manufactured homes, modular homes these days are very, very nice. Is there a way to perhaps, and they're quite a bit less than stick-frame-built homes? Is there any area in town where they might be able to have a new development with a, a neighborhood that's set up for modular homes or even you know, places that, that rent spaces for modular homes, so somebody that doesn't have a great deal of money can get into housing that way?
That's a great question. California law, and it's been now for about ten years, you can place a modular home on any lot that you can do a stick-built house. Let me say that again, any vacant lot that is R-one zoning, where you can put a stick-built house, onsite-built house. You can place a mo- a modular home. Because modular homes aren't what modular homes used to be. That you can, you can place anywhere in the commu- in the community. So, I, I think that's an affirmative to, and they are much less expensive. At least out of, out of the gate.
Right, yeah, I think for somebody with moderate income, that, that's a real good option.
Oh, yeah.
And they look, every, some of them look as good or better than a lot of homes I've seen around, so, you know, they're
Whether you like Santa Fe style or not, um, all of Rio Vista, those are all modular homes. Not by the golf course. And they've done a tremendous job of, of making them attractive. But yeah, anywhere you can build a stick-built home, you can build a, uh, you can place a module.
Pretty shores, on the river also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And those, those are going for three hundred thousand.
They were when I moved here.
Yeah, anyway, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was
Okay, did, did you have anything else?
Well, it is, uh, we are underway, and I was, I was thinking maybe Kevin bring this up, but uh, be careful about driving on Needle Sideway, because we are constructing up there. And in some times of the day, there's a fifteen-minute lag, uh, because there's only one lane open. Um, and on the bridge, it looks like it's not gonna start until the middle of November. The bridge redecking, but for four months, it'll be one lane in each direction, so
We're trapped.
Yeah, uh, but we should be done with Needle Sideway, right, uh, so, uh
They're handling it pretty quick. I mean, I think the longest I waited was like ten minutes one time, a couple of times, and then a lot of times it's dark in the morning.
Yeah.
At five o'clock, or actually, it's, yeah, there's no one.
You gotta break a couple legs to make it home, so
No, it looks nice.
Up with four weeks and then have a forever
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, great Needle Sideway, and think about what Needle Sideway used to be.
Oh, I
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-some years of it, I know, lot of suspension work.
Great, okay.
We will be laying asphalt, uh, we're finishing up all the waterline replacements on A, B, C, and D, uh, Bazaboo. Bunch of streets down in, in, in that area. And then the next tranche of streets that I have been sent to engineering are, we start getting up on the hill, up in the vistas. We start getting into De Soto Road, uh, and, and those streets. So, and then we'll follow with more up in that area. So we're chipping away at it, it's just slow and it I'm impatient, and we're all impatient, but uh, we're, we're having progress, we're, we're able to see it. Um, the, we're on council next Tuesday to award, um the water treatment plant project which requalifies two of our wells that we can't use because of iron and manganese. Uh, we've been doing some extra research that people have requested on the how that iron and manganese removal happens. It is use of fluorine like what we do now. Except after that, it goes through a sand filter. And don't ask me to explain much more, because I'm already at my chemistry limit, but that sand pulls the iron and manganese out of the water. So instead of having one well at twenty-five hundred, we'll have three wells that can feed that thing. And, and it triples our, our well capacity.
There are a whole bunch of little tiny guys I saw looking for jobs with magnets that pull the iron out. And they're gonna be in there swimming around.
So, uh, the capital projects, uh, are going well, uh, the housing element was approved. Uh, Patrick, what am I missing? Well, you, you get the, yeah, the manager's memo, there's way more information than is usually
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep, alright, thank you.
Wanted to get, thank you, so I'll ask I'm sorry?
When you coming home?
Soon.
You never have to answer your question.
Those of you interested, there are two trunk or treat events on the twenty, one on twenty-sixth, one on the twenty-ninth. On the twenty-ninth, there's the Kitty Parade up on Washington Street. Uh, uh, this weekend is homecoming, so they're out painting the blue horseshoe, uh, on, uh, on the streets.
They're gonna have our big silver Mustang, the crum- the chrome.
It's home, yeah, I've seen it, and then the bonfire is Friday. Uh, Thursday, so tomorrow night. We've been running around trying to find all the unused pallets, uh, to throw on there. We got a fire permit, uh, which is a step forward.
The school or the city? That's the school.
School.
I have a whole bunch of dead branches in my yard, you can have.
I call the school. Uh, then, uh, the fire department has been marshaled, they're ready to go. We'll have, uh, the city's, uh, water, uh, tank, uh, available if the fire department calls us. Uh, uh, so, homecoming is Friday, pretty.
Okay, well, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
In a second. All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good night.
Good night.